Jeff Slossing here from 19 News Now at the 19 News Digital Desk. We'd been waiting, kind of in a holding pattern, for the beginning of the East Cleveland, or the Cleveland Heights, excuse me, council meeting. For those that are unfamiliar, Mayor Khalil Sarin has been under immense heat for the past couple of weeks due to his behavior, behavior of his wife. Now, today, they are looking to pass a resolution, they being city council, to say that they have no faith in his ability to perform his duties as mayor. Let's take you there live.
Together last July before last August recess. And between August and December, so we had four months to basically do our work at the property. We tore out the mezzanine, separated utilities, replaced the roof, removed all of the rooftop HVAC units, and then we turned the space over to Grocery Outlet, their construction crew in early December. And since then, they've been working almost every day, readying the store for the new operators. So, everything inside is brand-new. They brought new electrical service, all new HVAC, all new plumbing, all new refrigeration, fixtures, and it looks great. They're scheduled to open July 10th, which is a Thursday. In fact, the construction crews have only a couple more weeks before they turn it over to the store team that's gonna be in stocking the shelves and putting the graphics up and the signage and everything else. So, we're very excited. I did meet the independent owner-operators. Their names are Michael Weber and Melissa Walsh, and they are originally from Big Bear, California. And they had a choice of which location they could choose, and after visiting Cleveland Heights, they chose Cleveland Heights. They said they had a great feel, they liked the neighborhood's feel. They've moved into a home in University Heights, so, you know, a few miles away. And I was, you know, with my background and my family's background in the business, I kinda quizzed them, you know, even though it was our first meeting, I kinda went right at them and asked a lot of questions, and I was generally impressed with, I think they recognized the opportunity they have, and I think they know what it's gonna take, I think they're committed, and just the responses that they had to my questions, they were very insightful, they, I can't put a finger on it, but they, it just seemed intuitive, just from what they said about Cleveland compared to the other locations that they had a chance to get. They kinda seemed like they had already lived here and kinda knew how things work around here. So, very encouraged and obviously wish them all the best, and July 10th, you know, we'll be here before you know it. What else can I say? I know a big question has been beer and wine. It's, I know they will carry beer and wine, I'm not sure if they'll have it available the day the store opens, but they are going through the process of getting the permit, and I think it's been a slight challenge just because of how it works in Ohio and who the state wants the permit to actually be in, and you have a case where you have Grocery Outlet Corporate, and then you have the independent owner-operators, and they have to work out their own arrangement. But, I've actually filled out the forms requested of me so that they can proceed with getting a license. So, that was one of the questions that was kinda up in the air for a while. But, I'm happy to answer any questions about Grocery Outlet, about the medical building next door and all the scaffolding that's currently there, and anything else, really.
I just wanna, I don't have a question, I just wanna thank your family for the commitment to finding a grocer to go into that space. I just recall how difficult it was in terms of the improvements that we needed to have and the investment, the cost, but being committed to having a grocer in that area to continue to serve folks. I just wanna really just say thank you for that. I know that you guys caught a whole lot, went through a lot of negotiations and meeting a lot of different companies to make this happen. And watching that work happen, and knowing that you're doing that and doing the work on the facing and all that at the same time, it's just great to see that investment. But, I just want you to know, we really, really do appreciate your family and the work that you've got done and the commitment that you have to Cleveland Heights. There wasn't a time where we spoke that you weren't trying to lean in and really get the right grocer in that space to make sure that the community in that area can still get access to food, so thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanna thank you, that's my daughter's favorite grocery store, San Francisco, I know that's where she's gonna be, but I also wanna thank you for the work that you've done in the medical building and that cornice, new replacements. It is absolutely gorgeous, I mean, you can't see a whole lot of it with the scaffolding, but you sort of poke around, it's historically accurate, I know it looks like there's fiberglass pieces or something in there.
It is, it is.
Pieces of stone, maybe, so it may fall on someone, maybe go bounce, but I know that's not gonna happen, and I really appreciate the work that you've put in there.
Thank you.
Charles from country?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank you again to echo what we've already heard, you overviewed for us all of the different stores that you reached out to, you and your family put so much time and effort into it, and I'm just grateful for your commitment to the neighborhood and City of Cleveland Heights. I know a lot of people are very excited for it to open, I am, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Russo, we really appreciate it, and you're welcome here anytime, and we're glad, this is one of those things, a year ago you said it was gonna be July, and it's opening in July.
They're on schedule.
Isn't that fantastic?
Before I leave, I just wanted to just mention that I know there's, the project across from the ascent is, in the works are being discussed or planned, and I, I'm in support of it, just as a merchant, as a stakeholder in the district, I like the, I like what I've seen so far with the housing project. My two cents.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Next, you have communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing that I would like to announce is that the investigation by the Bureau of Criminal Investigations at the State into the officer-involved shooting of Christian Taylor Thomas, that investigatory piece, the information and evidence gathering portion of that process has been completed. The materials have been turned over to the Office of Special Prosecutions at the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and as I explained in my last State of the City, that process continues to the calling of a grand jury. The special prosecutions unit will call a grand jury in July, at which point they will present this evidence, the materials from the investigation, to that grand jury who will then determine whether or not any criminal charges are warranted. And so, you know, again, as we've all known by now, I hope everybody knows, this investigation was not in the hands of the city, but in the hands of the state by design, to take it out of our hands and allow an outside agency to perform that investigation. This is the same reason why the Office of the Attorney General has a special prosecutions unit to create some separation between our county prosecutor's office and these officer-involved shootings, and the investigations and potential grand jury proceedings within the county. So, I just wanted to give everybody an update that this process is moving forward. The state is on its timeline for that investigation and the next step in the process, we do not control that, but I did want to let people know when there was an update to be had about the next step in the process. So, that's the first thing I wanted to mention. Secondly, I wanted to talk about Cumberland Pool a little bit, as probably everybody has heard thus far, you know, up till now. We have had some difficulty stemming from repairs that were, I'd say, done, I guess is a way to say it, on the pool last year. Those repairs, we can have a longer conversation about the state of those repairs and the contracting process for those repairs, but ultimately, what we discovered is that there were additional needs that the pool had. We attempted to move through a contracting process to start the work last year. Unfortunately, by the time we got through the contract authorization process, the weather had turned and we were not able to start that work last year. So, we got through the approval process, contracted with the company, Novak &amp; Sons, to perform the work at the earliest possible moment, you know, before the season started. We've had sort of an unusually damp or wet May this year, and what that has presented us with is a challenge, because the work cannot be done either sort of the day of a rain or the day after while things are still wet. And so, those unfortunate timeframes and requirements for the particular work that needs to be done, which I think centers around, in terms of the massive leaking that we are experiencing, that we have put off in the interest of not interrupting the swim season as much as possible in previous years. The scum gutter in particular is of primary concern, and then additional work needs to be done as well. As many people have seen already, we're anticipating a two-week delay in the opening to get that work done. But I did want to at least express a little bit of good news. We have, I personally have, I reached out to Mayor Brennan in University Heights, who was very amenable to providing us in Cleveland Heights with some assistance, and we started working through a potential agreement with the City of University Heights to allow Cleveland Heights residents to temporarily use their outdoor pool. Unfortunately, in the process, and I got, I had some personal communication with council members in University Heights who made it very clear, unfortunately, that the council was not going to allow that to happen. And I was told in no uncertain terms that they were not going to allow that to happen. And we are working through, I believe, right now, a potential agreement with the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District to temporarily use the pool at the high school in the intervening time between now and when Cumberland opens. But, as far as I've been told, we have not received sort of a final approval from the board on that. But there is a bit of a bright spot. I did receive word from Mayor Weiss in Shaker Heights that they would be happy to help us out, and so, Cleveland, we're still ironing out the details, but we hope to provide a mechanism for Cleveland Heights residents who have purchased pool passes to temporarily use the pool in Shaker Heights to swim, do laps, and so, we hope to provide more detail on that as soon as possible. So, the two mayors that I reached out to were very eager to help. It hit some road bumps in University Heights, but in Shaker Heights, it looks like we're full speed ahead on that sort of collaborative approach. I assured the mayors that should they fall into the same issue at some point, we would be happy to help them out as well. And so, I just wanted to let people know to look out for any additional information, and hopefully we can get Cumberland Pool opened back up as quickly as possible. And I think with that, that concludes my remarks for today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Departmental reports, is Director Gonzalez here? Oh, there he is.
Good evening, City Council. I will keep my report brief, because I'm sure that you guys have a full agenda tonight, as we all know. So, Mayor Sarin gave a great report on Cumberland Pool. Just to add a couple things to that as well, too, just wanted to address a couple main questions that I've been giving that I'm sure it's good to get out to the public. One of the main questions is that, how come we didn't start the work sooner, or how come the work wasn't done last fall? Well, last fall, I can't speak too much for, because I wasn't here, but I know that in November, when I got here, it was one of the issues that immediately came to my plate, and we addressed it, you know, right away. We brought it in front of your guys' agenda, and you guys were gracious enough to approve it. I'm first reading right away. Unfortunately, right after that happened, snow fell. Literally, I think the very next day, snow fell. So, that washed out our fall season of getting it repaired. But, the one nice part is that we were lucky enough to secure Frank Novak &amp; Sons, who are a super well-renowned pool repair company. They've done, they did the repairs on Lakewood Pool, Cleveland Clinic Pool, and a bunch of other surrounding communities here in northeast Ohio. But the one thing that we went into this upcoming spring with knowing is that they have a lot of work out in play. One of them being, they're actually doing the painting and repairs over at Kane Park as well, too, and our admin and performers building. So, we had what I thought was a decent plan in place, and here I am, I'm taking accountability for things that are happening right now in our city. So, I apologize for not opening on time, but we thought that we had a good plan in place. Unfortunately, Mother Nature, like the mayor said, just did not cooperate with us. We had that plan to end the work in the middle of May, that were giving us two weeks of time to fill it, heat it, and then open up to the public, because they were so backed up and all that good stuff. We wanted to start way sooner, but unfortunately, Frank Novak &amp; Sons, they were just pretty backed up. So, the rain hit, the rain hit, the rain continued to hit, and it just pushed us further back and further back. So, for that, we apologize. Can't apologize for enough Mother Nature, but just apologize for the timeline of things. Another big question that we got regarding Cumberland Pool as well, too, is how come you guys let us know so late? And once again, as your Parks and Rec Director, I will take accountability for that. I guess the main reason why we put the word out so late is because we were trying to be as hopeful as possible to the community that we would be able to deliver better news, and unfortunately, the weather just didn't allow us to do that. So, moving forward, we'll be better in our communications with the public and be more conscious. Instead of thinking with our heart, we'll think more with our minds and business model and delivering that news to Cumberland Pool. But like the mayor said, there is some good news, we are gonna be open on June 16th. They have been out, actually, they were out yesterday, working on a Sunday with six or seven members of their crew, so they're working diligently, hitting up the good weather, and then they were out today, and then they will be finishing up their work tomorrow, because we're supposed to have some beautiful weather. And so, we will get that all taken care of tomorrow, which will give us about an eight to 10 day, so there's gonna be no work that's gonna be done for about eight to 10 days, but that's by design, because we wanted to set and cure properly. I've been aware of that back in 2004 from some longstanding people that worked at the community center, that back in 2004, we did the same type of work, and they filled the pool too early, as opposed to what the contractor said, and next thing you know, our pool was being ruined, and we kinda had to redo some of that work, so we're trying to avoid that at all costs. Potentially, we could fill the pool on Wednesday or Thursday, but that's not the right thing to do, right? We wanna do it the right way and the right way the first time, to hopefully eliminate the leaking that we're having in the pool. So, thank you, Mayor, for getting Shaker Heights on board with this, this is a great thing for our members. I do have a little bit more details regarding that, is that we are gonna be able to use their pool starting on Thursday, because their pool doesn't open till Thursday, so starting on Thursday, we'll be able to use their pool from 12:00 PM to 7:30 PM every day of the week except for Saturdays. So, that's the arrangement that we worked out with them. And we are still working on details with the school district. It's still in the school board's hands right now, but we're hoping to hear something back either tomorrow or very, very soon regarding that, so just wanted to get that word out there regarding Cumberland Pool. A couple other updates that was requested of me. First is the Dennison Park splash pad. I know that's been a hot topic for quite a few years here, goes well before I started as well, but the nice part about it is that I've, even in my previous job, I've had a great relationship with Game Time, specifically their representatives, so this was a fairly easy transition for me regarding that. So, I was able to get on board quickly with the splash pad. I just met onsite with them last week, and what we're looking at, because we have to get everything complete over at Dennison Park, there's a lot going on, guests have been over there, there's, we have the whole turf with the demolition of the whole pool house, the turf project going on, and then also the pickleball courts. So, there's a lot of construction going on over there, the people that live in that area, I apologize, but we're trying to get stuff done efficiently and as quickly as possible. But regarding the splash pad, all that work needs to be done before we can consider doing anything over there. We had to get that pool house down before we could determine where the lines were, utility lines, water lines, different things like that. So, good thing is that we've located all those good things, and now that with that pool house done, we'll be able to position, what they're going to do is redo the rendering to position the pool house correctly, I'm sorry, not the pool house for the splash pad correctly, so that way, it'll fit the space a little bit better than what was planned before. So, I think it's gonna, it's gonna end up being a better plan in the end. Good part about it is that they may have to shrink the footprint just a hair, meaning less concrete and stuff like that, but we'll be able to stick with the same budget that was allocated back in 2023. So, you're thinking, two years later, costs have gone up and all that good stuff, but I'm trying, I'm working it out with them, so that way, our costs really don't go up and our footprint really hasn't shrunk that much, it may just shrink just a hair, but... And then what we're looking at is a potential late summer, early fall installation. What they'll do is they'll get it all installed, they'll get the lines pressure-tested and everything looking like it's ready to go, so that all it is, is in the spring of next year, it'll be turnkey, we'll just flip the switch, and it'll be ready to go for next season. Unfortunately, I know that's not the news that everybody wants to hear, because they want it in the ground for end-use for 2025, but the reality of things is that there's just too many things going on over there for it to be installed and to be able to be used this year.
Mr. President, just, I wanted to make sure to clarify one thing, and then also, if the director would clarify another thing. When the project was, when the splash pad was designed, when that project was initiated, there was a great deal of excitement. I was on council at the time, you know, after the closing of Dennison Pool, there was an eagerness to provide a water feature that the kids could enjoy at Dennison Park, and I think in that eagerness, the design of that project did not take into account sort of the infrastructure underneath the splash pad that would be required for its actual installation when that project was first contemplated, and then when the city administration moved on that. And so, over the course of the next, you know, while under this administration, we had to, of course, work with council. Council allocated ARPA dollars for work at Dennison that we have, you know, included, this particular infrastructure project, so that we can install finally the splash pad and provide that amenity to the residents of that neighborhood. And so, I just wanted to say that sort of that infrastructure piece has delayed the installation, but our commitment to installing that has never wavered. Just working through the infrastructure investment was sort of the sticking point in this, because it wasn't designed into the project in the first place. But the other thing that I was hoping that the director could clarify, or dispel, some of the concerns, you know, conspiracy theories about shipping containers that people are afraid will just, you know, cover every square inch of Dennison Park, and so, I'm wondering if you can provide a little bit of clarity about how that rumor came to be and what the actual reality of the situation is.
Sure, and that's actually part of my report I have written out here. It segues right into what my next topic is. So, I know that there had been a lot of concerns regarding shipping containers and whatnot, so once again, I've only been here since November, but from my understanding is that we have to house, well, not from my understanding, what I do know is that we have a lot of equipment over there that's gonna need to be housed. We have, we just ordered an electric gator with a bunch of attachments to be able to maintain the turf and all that good stuff. We have some soccer equipment, some goals, you know, a lot of those different things that we're gonna have to find a house for as well, too. Something that's gonna have to be a little bit closer to the field that we have to do. So, when this whole project was taking place, a good alternative to that was, I believe, was brought that a shipping container that can be revamped and look nice and all that good stuff would be a great alternative to just your normal shed or garage and all that good stuff. So, that's where the whole shipping container idea came into play. The one thing that I did want to emphasize that I submitted in my email to you guys as well, too, when I did give an update, is that nothing has been ordered, nothing has been, we're still investigating the topics of a shipping container, what it would look like, how would it fit the area, all that good stuff. So, I think that there's been talks that it's gonna be filled with shipping containers over there, but in the reality of things, still to this day, nothing has been ordered, and we're still in the talks or negotiations of what that's gonna look like in that area as well.
Specifically, this is one container or shed or constructed building that will house our area equipment for the turf field, and it will be located adjacent to the turf field, not sort of interrupting other locations in the park, but specific for serving that turf field with equipment as a primary use. Is it adjacent to the bleachers?
Yeah, it'll be very, very close to the bleachers, adjacent to them as well, too. Now, if you guys drive over there, we were able to salvage the old garage that sits over there, because it's in, we did our analysis, it's in great structural shape. So, that's gonna primarily, as we hope, will be a primarily used for our pool house, that we'll be able to store our equipment for the splash pad and different things like that, but it didn't make much sense to, I guess temporarily, because we don't have anything in place, it'll house the gator and different things like that, but it makes more sense to have something a little bit closer to the field with, like this mayor said, adjacent to the bleachers, to be able to have something over there. And then, I don't wanna take up too much more time, but I, the last thing that I just wanna not address, but say to city council and the public as well, too, is that being your new Parks and Rec Director, I know, you know, there's a lot of questions on the person that sat in my seat before, or even before that, on why things were and weren't done, you know, to an extent, but I just wanted to let you guys know is that, you know, I'm here now, I'm dedicated to the community, to the city, so I'm looking forward to just moving everything forward and just trying to make Parks and Rec the best that it can possibly be. So, I thank you guys for the opportunity. Any questions?
Speaking of the shipping containers, when we were asking, when we were asked to provide money for the shipping containers via ARPA funds, we, one of the contingency was that there will be community input on that prior to ordering any shipping containers. I'd like to see that commitment, even though we're probably not gonna be using ARPA for that, whatever it is that you wanna put over that, whatever it is that you wanna put over there for your equipment, which I understand and get it, needs to be protected. But if you would consider that when you're talking with your staff about possibly having community of at least the neighborhood over there in terms of, if you do decide to do a shipping container, really appreciate it. And I'd also appreciate it if you keep us continuously updated on the pool so that everybody knows what's going on in Cumberland and what's going on at the splash pad at Dennison and other facilities. I liked what you sent us this week to council and I think that everybody would appreciate hearing that information. So, thank you.
You got it.
Councilor. I just want to thank you again for the work that you're doing. I know you're standing on a whole lot of weight and a whole lot of pressures, you're coming in and trying to figure this out. And so, we see the level of engagement that you try, you and the staff. And just from residents in that area I've spoken to, they've never seen that much activity in Dennison Park in such a long time. So, it's just great to see that as well. So, although it's chaos, we know that when it's complete, it's gonna look completely different now. And it's just great to be able to have that as an anchor on that corner of the area and city. So, thank you for all the work that you're doing. It's just clear that investment is really happening.
Thank you.
Vice President Russell.
Yes, I definitely want to thank you. That splash pad has been an initiative of mine since I came on council in 2019. You've been pushing it for Dennison Park, I've been pushing it for Dennison Park for a very long time. Also, I want to say thank you, and I guess to you and the mayor for trying to come up with some type of agreement with the school system for the residents to be able to use indoor pool. That's another initiative I've been pushing for a very long time. And I hope that agreement becomes permanent because our residents have been looking to swim in that indoor pool for a very long time. And so, hopefully, since some dialogue is now going on, maybe Bill and I can put, arrest the, the pool legislation, but we'll see. But hopefully, this can be something permanent. And glad is now coming after so long of await. So, thank you so very much for your efforts. I appreciate it.
And just to, just to go along with that, I, I just want to emphasize that the pool community is strong here, which I'm realizing very quickly. And I, I think aquatics in some capacity, whether we're talking Cumberland Pool or some type of indoor pool, is going to have to be addressed and analyzed at, at some point. So, I, I agree with you and I think the mayor has put forward a nice plan with feasibility study that we're, we're taking a look at and hopefully, we will be able to present something to everybody here very soon.
I just hate it took so long.
Understood, understood, but we're moving forward.
I appreciate it. Everything you've done, I'm really good. Thank you.
Director Gonzalez, where would people change for the splash pad? Is there gonna be a place for them to?
So, so as, as of now, it would just be the bathrooms located by the tennis courts, basketball courts right now. But I think down the road, that's gonna be something, and there is some really nice solutions that we can move forward, maybe for capital items for down the road, but I think that that's something that we will have to address. I, I don't think, there are some people that said, well, we should have left the pool house up because that would have been a nice changing spot. That, in my opinion, wasn't a reality because that place was so big and it wasn't meant to be, and it was meant to be a pool house with lockers and all that good stuff. So, I think that there's other solutions that we can evaluate down the road that will better serve that area.
And along those lines, Mr. President, we may have to have that same conversation about the splash pad at Kane Park if we're going to be moving in a, in a different direction on that sort of changing situation. But I, the, the one other thing that I thought that it was important to note is, well, actually, you know what, I'll, I'll, I'll hold up. But no, I won't. What we're talking about in terms of the feasibility study is a conversation that this community started a long time ago about, and we recently, I think I may have sent it to all of council, I'm not sure if it was just to you, Mr. President, or that you received an email from a resident and forwarded it. About, in part, about the creation of an indoor pool that the city would own and operate. And that resident suggested, or at least mentioned, other communities that have indoor pools connected to their community centers and how that would be a lovely thing potentially for the city of Cleveland Heights. And that is something that we have been discussing and, and working through some plans on, and that's what the director was, was mentioning, is sort of the conversations that we've been having about the potential construction of an indoor pool facility at the community center. And to me, it's an exciting project. I think that the community would benefit for, you know, decades to come if we, if we chose to go that route as a community, having control of that facility and providing access to the residents of Cleveland Heights in that way, to kids in the summer and winter, winter break, and all of this stuff that we would have a little bit more control over would make a great deal of sense in terms of the recreation possibilities that we offer to residents. So, but we'll, we'll be, I think, presenting some of those preliminary plans pretty soon. And I, I look forward to hearing everybody's feedback on them.
All right, last question, Vice President Russell.
Yes, I just want to put it on the record, the plan for the splash pad, I think I spoke to you about it, next to it, it's supposed to be a toddler playground so that the parents can sit there with their toddlers and their small children next to the splash pad. So, I just don't want that to go away. You probably didn't know anything about it, but that was part of the splash pad. But we've been pushing the splash pad, trying to get it through.
Definitely excited to have further conversations about it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Director. That's all.
Thank you.
All right, welcome to the floor. Stop this, spontaneous one. We're gonna move on to our favorite public comment. We have over 20 people.
Mr. President, we gotta report to the court of council real quick.
Oh, sorry. How could I skip the birthday girl? I'm her birthday.
Just to notify council that a notice to legislative authority has been received for a new D1, D3 liquor permit for One Two Two Three Lounge Place LLC, Doing Businesses One Two Two Three Lounge Place, located at 2558 Noble Road. This matter has been referred to the mayor and chief of police.
Thank you. Now, on a public comment, so keep it civil and we're gonna have to do two minutes. I'm really sorry that there's just so many that want to tell me, want to hear you, but that's, that's good. Eddie, we're gonna start with the agenda first.
Lou Mandine.
Thank you, council. Mr. Mayor, my name's Lou Mandine, I live on Delaware Drive. I, along with a number of my neighbors, am here to speak about the third reading of ordinance number 0632025, and that's the development on Cedar Road between South Overlook and Delaware Drive. As you may know, this did not come to the attention of the residents of Cedar Hill neighborhood until just days before the May 5th council meeting. Since that time, a number of us have organized and been working very hard to prepare alternative proposals for the two parcels of green space located on Cedar Road. It is my understanding that the city council's received an initial proposal from our group and contained several ideas. I would like to make you aware that I've hand-delivered seven Freedom of Information Act requests to the various boards, committees, departments that I thought might have contact with this matter. I wasn't sure exactly how to do it, so I just, I just spread it around the city. Except for the PDF documents that Paul Volpe filed previously, sometime during the nine months he's been working on this, I've received no other documentation. I've seen nothing that this city has communicated with Paul Volpe, not a letter or a memo. That seems unlikely, but I haven't received anything yet. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, four boar holes were dug and surveyors have on that property, had been on that, on that property. And on what authority? As I understand it, Paul Volpe has no possessory or ownership rights to that land. I have not been able to discover anyone who has authorized the boar holes or surveyors. And once again, this ordinance is being identified as a matter that should go into effect on an emergent basis. I was told at the last meeting that there, this was a pro forma matter to, to list something as emergent. To quote the ordinance proposal of April 21st, it says, "It is necessary that this ordinance become immediately effective as an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace." Hell.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
May I just say, this has been green space for 77 years. And to, and to make this an emergent matter after all that time, it sounds unnecessary and, and unfair to the residents in the neighborhood. So, thank you.
President, council members, I'm also here about ordinance 0632025. If you close your eyes and think about how you enter Cleveland Heights, where is it? It's the top of Cedar Hill. There is a golden opportunity with that space because the ascent didn't provide welcome to Cleveland Heights. There is a golden opportunity and the proposal that we have submitted talks about different ways to use that green space. It could be a sculpture garden, it should be a welcome to Cedar, to Cleveland Heights, could be an arboretum. Why an arboretum? The, the city already invests in trees for tree lawns. Why not take some of that investment and, and put new trees on there, label them and make it more like a science garden? So, we submitted the proposal. The council needs to not forget that we've only had five weeks since we heard this. So, if, if the proposal I sent to all of you is not quite flushed out, we've only had five weeks. We know the developer's been working on this for nine months and has had meetings with city council, with the city on this, and we've not been, we've not been made aware of this. You know, the, the property was never put up for public sale. The council packet that you've all got, page 117 just on that, there was a city memo in there that talks about the community meeting, doesn't give you any insight, if you didn't attend that meeting, any insight in what the conversation was about, how many people were present that were against this. So, you know, the, the proposal we submitted includes a gateway sign, sculpture garden. There is also the issue of safety. As the trucks come up there in the winter and snow plow, that goes right onto that sidewalk. It's the only piece of sidewalk along that corridor that does not have any tree lawn. And then the bank of it, the burn, does not allow that snow to be moved off anywhere else. So, you have, you know, you have an opportunity, if you sell this property, that opportunity to develop that as a gateway, as green space, as park space will go forever. It will just become another condo. Thank you.
Cindy Turri.
Hi, my name is Cindy and I live on Delaware Drive. And my comments address the potential green space on Cedar being developed into condos, which I believe will negatively impact our, my neighborhood. I listened to the April 23rd City Council Planning and Development Committee meeting where the developer stated, paraphrase, that the city has to approve this. If we wait for the community or residents to approve, there will be no development. That is not true. We have the ascent, we have the park synagogue development that's going in now, we have Meadow Brook and the Marquis. So, we have plenty of development. And I calculated out, we had 80 people sign a petition for our neighborhood. If you take those 80 people and what they paying taxes per year, that's about $500,000. You multiply that over 15 years, you are collecting $7.5 million from our streets and you're not giving us a voice as to what happens to that space. People walk their dogs. I use that sidewalk to walk down to University Park. The developer made a comment that that, that that's not used, it's a vacant lot, it is not a vacant lot. My neighbor dog Springer, or Sky, who is a Springer spaniel, loves to go down there and play, you know? And that's a secondary park for people with dogs. It's a place, it's a sidewalk, or it's a place because the sidewalk isn't safe. It's a place where we can kind of walk up on the hill to get down to University Circle. What, you know, the, the businesses will make money off this, the developer will make money off this, and for the $7.5 million you guys are gonna collect from us living on those streets over the next two years is we will get nothing. We will lose our green space, we will lose our safety to walk down to University Circle, and we will lose our space for our dog. Thanks for listening.
My name is Helen Liggett, I live on Delaware Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to repeat the background information on the public-owned space on Cedar Road between Delaware Drive and South Overlook. A potential developer presented his proposal on the 15th of May. His slide of the overview of the site showed what a graceful shape this sliver of land has. It also showed how narrow it is. At ground level, the site is the bottom of a U shape that describes the immediate neighborhood. The two streets, Delaware Drive and South Overlook, going up to North Park, make up the legs of the U. And one could add the parallel adjacent streets. From this point of view, the developers claim that the site is part of a commercial district and therefore should be developed as private high-end condominium units isn't logical. The site has been public space for at least 77 years. It functions as community green space for the immediate neighborhood. It is well-loved, as evidenced by the number of signers to the petition. It is used daily and disregarded, it is passable all year, whereas the sidewalk is dangerous in the winter. As my description pointed out, the space identifies the edge of the immediate neighborhood. It provides a buffer from the traffic of Cedar Road and the large-scale development across the street. The land slopes upward from the street and tall dense greenery and privacy fences run along the back. For drivers coming up Cedar Hill, it signals the beginning of Cleveland Heights. Thus, the site is an active and integral part of neighborhood life. It is not empty vacant land that any proposal to turn it into private property implies. The city's forward climate plan includes a strategy of, quote, "identifying opportunities to expand green spaces in all neighborhoods," end quote. In this case, the community green space already exists. It enhances the neighborhood and city in social and physical ways. As public space, it belongs to us all and is part of the city life that we value and to which we all contribute. I urge the city council not to move the sale and to consider residents' proposals. Thank you.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Mr. Mayor, councilors, Addie, happy birthday. Mayor Saren, thank you for flying the pride flag at City Hall for June. Councilors, concerning resolution 1032025, I wish to go on record that I also have no confidence. I have no confidence in this city council's ability to do their job. The people of Cleveland Heights voted to create a separate equal branch of government under a strong mayor, and from the very beginning, some of you could not accept that. You complained, you obstructed, you lied, you conspired, you did everything you could to make the mayor's job impossible, and now this is where we are. Whether or not it was your original intention, you have stirred up all the latent racism in the community. Because like it or not, we are all products of a racist society. We all carry the racist virus and under sufficient pressure, that virus can be activated and spread through a community, as is happening here now. You have summoned up a lynch mob and you refuse to acknowledge this. I don't have time to go into implicit bias and cognitive dissonance and the other mechanisms of denial, but you won't let yourself see what you were doing. Some of us do see what you were doing and we refuse to be silent, we refuse to be complicit. Whatever your original intention, you now know that racism is fueling this vendetta, racism and misogyny, because that virus has also been reactivated. And yet, you continue to fan the flames, throwing your attack dogs a red meat like this resolution. And anyone running to be mayor should not be voting on this resolution, let alone bringing it to city council. That is a horrible abuse of your position on the city council. Yes, there are other factors involved here. There are muddied interests operating behind the scenes that would like to see the mayor out of the way so that they continue their gentrification projects. But they are also using racism to forward their agenda and they are using you. But that does not excuse you. You are morally culpable. We see you and we will not forget.
Tom Hudek, Bradford Road. I'd like to address the objections some citizens have to the development of a vacant lot on Cedar Hill. Now, as a former marketer, I do admire their attempt to rebrand a narrow vacant lot on the commercial strip between Euclid Heights and Fairmont Boulevards. the commercial strip between Euclid Heights and Fairmont Boulevards as a green space. Perhaps they are thinking of the boss, who some of you may recall, Tony, I'm looking at you, the boss once sang about the midnight gang who's assembled and picked a rendezvous for the night. They'll meet me at that giant Exxon sign that brings this fair city light. I'm quoting Bruce Springsteen because the only view this green space offers is that of a Sunoco gas station, and beyond that, a Firestone repair shop. And these citizens already have a green space maintained by the city on North Park Boulevard at the opposite end of the very same set of blocks. That real green space, by the way, is far larger than the narrow lot bordering the busy traffic on Cedar Road. And developing the lot on Cedar will convert it into a tax revenue generating property. Or do these citizens think their taxes are too low? Unfortunately, concern for the environment here in Cleveland Heights has repeatedly been repurposed to serve private agendas. Take the case of the newly-elected councilwoman who ran into opposition to her expensive recycling scheme. So, what did she do? She resigned. And now, instead of public service, she's the chief correspondent for what I call the Cleveland Heights Mayor Haters Club. When the history of this period in Cleveland Heights is written, people will wonder how concern for the environment came to be used as a cudgel in an attempt to destroy our city's first elected mayor, an attempt that, no matter what your opinion of him or this council, that has led to the heights to be synonymous with dysfunction. It's well past the time for people to stop cloaking their hidden agendas under the guise of environmental altruism. Thank you.
Paul Volpe?
Council President, before you start the clock, before you start the clock, started before I even got up to the thing, okay? Well, I don't know the press. I'm just, I'm just, I was just going to say, considering I am the effective party to all of this, I'm the evil developer, if I could, may take a couple of more seconds, if you indulge me, I'm going to read a statement as fast as I can, okay? But this is about my integrity as much as anything else. As far as development's concerned, I don't care anymore. After 40 years of practicing architecture and the values of urban design and planning, I decided to get involved after I moved here nine years ago. I built a home, I moved to the city, my kids live here. I tried to offer insight and ideas, as I believe Cleveland Heights is sadly in decline, a lot of people agree with that, but could have great days ahead. Our identity and future lie with investment in our beautiful neighborhoods, new housing and revitalization of our wonderful commercial districts. So, I propose diverse for-sale, for-sale infill developments on vacant properties, four of which failed because of a greedy church, an arrogant city manager, a stubborn library director, and a thoughtless utility company. Finally, one took hold, a half acre, 330-foot, narrow strip, a city property that nobody ever cared about until I came along and talked about, and some called it a park, and others said, as the gentleman just said, is a vacant and underutilized parcel. The proposal is simply to extend the neighborhood, complete the business district, fill, fill an ugly void with quality architecture and three unique, beautiful, tax-paying, single-family homes. After nine months of discussion, planning, designing, negotiating with the city, we're here today in front of city council with a purchase agreement. That's all it is, it has to go in front of many other boards before this gets approved. And you all can come to those boards and speak your mind. But on Friday of last week, the city's hired attorney offered us last-minute changes to the purchase agreement, telling us to take them or leave them. Okay, well, after all this, nine months of an invisible mayor, a law and city planning directors, who I previously trusted, Bill, I trusted you, but they all vanished for some reason, and there was no assurance we'd get the support needed to at least discuss this so it might move forward. Well, my partner and I regrettably say, uncle, uncle, we're done. I'm done. I'm done with the city. I'm finished, okay? So, people, you want your park? You got it. I'm not going to stand in your way. You got it, it's there, okay? But consider that there is another side to this, because that piece of land is city property, it's not your property, it's all of our property, and our neighborhoods are shared, and their future is something that will affect all of us. Thank you, council, for listening in the past. Thanks, Brian Anderson, for being the only one that provided us any professional service under difficult circumstances. And to Khalil Sarin, look, some senior wisdom, I have a son your age, and I told him, a successful leader must love to engage with people, know how to listen, and lead with vision. You've done none of these. It's time to go. And for me, too. Goodbye.
Ken Sarin?
Mr. Volpe, I just want to understand this, are you withdrawing this?
Yes, I'm done. I'm done, don't worry about it. Give them their land. No leadership in this now.
All right, Ken Sarin from South Overlook here to speak about Ons 06325, 2025 as well. And it's more about the inconsistent process with development in this community. I, public input is an important piece. I sit on the Cleveland Heights Plan Commission now, and I've seen a couple of different examples of this, right? We have the Severance Plan where the developer from New York is coming here, gathering public input from the very beginning to actually include that in the development of the whole plan. Another example would be a nobility court, which is one that, again, neighbors did not really know about. There was very little public input, and it wasn't until it got to the planning commission that... Really urge this, the mayor, the administration, the council, that any development plan to really start there, to really develop the plan and have the input so that it doesn't get slowed down. The nobility court process, it ended up being really great, but that is because we slowed it down and actually got that community input necessary to come up with a good product. So, just urge you all to really, well, I guess it's not on the table now, but for future development deals, please have a more, have a process that is consistent, that has community input at the very beginning, and you all end up with a better product. Thank you.
Kirsten Ryan?
I just want to say very wise words. Hi, Kirsten Ryan, Washington Boulevard. Mayor Sarin, as a resident and a homeowner in Cleveland Heights, and as someone who voted for both you and a strong mayor, I'm here today to emphatically ask you to step down. You've become the story, and therefore, it is impossible to effectively govern when the story of the day, every day, is some fresh scandal originating from your office. We deserve and voted for a system of effective governance, not our current reality where your scandals play out like bad community theater. Your tenure has been marred by ongoing controversies, including the most recent and extraordinarily disturbing allegations against your wife, who no one voted for, but whose conduct has negatively reflected on and deeply impacted the people that you claim to serve. Your issues have also led to the resignation of key city officials and a crippled critical city function. In effect, your controversies have blocked you from doing your literal job, overseeing and managing an ineffective government and functioning government in Cleveland Heights. If you have to film yourselves performatively working, you have lost the plot, and you need to resign. The entire focus, yours and the council's, right now is on internal disputes, which has stopped progress on pressing matters like critical infrastructure we use every day. For the well-being of our community, it is imperative that you exit the clown car and step down, because this tent and this town is done with your circus.
Hello, Robin Kozlin. I'm living on Wood Road, I don't live on Delamere, but I do want, I would like you to know that I consider abatement a tariff on the rest of us, and that when you abate properties, the rest of us have to pick up the slack. And I understand why you do it in certain circumstances, but on that neighborhood, you're talking about abating? You've got to be kidding, and I'm done.
That's all for legislative agenda items. CJ Nash?
CJ Nash, Vandemar Road, and I think you guys know me well enough to know I'm absolutely furious, I'm doing a really good job of trying to hold it in, not cuss real bad. Thank you for the director for being honest about the shipping containers. You, Mayor Sarin, and you, Anthony Maddox, I faced you guys at a meeting not too long ago, and I asked you, I asked you, are you putting shipping containers in Denison Park? You didn't say no, you didn't say yes, but you did. What you said was that these council members had gone back and changed their minds. That is a lie. They did not, because they did not know about the shipping containers. You wrote that article in the focus, you didn't call them shipping containers, you called them storage containers. One little bitty teeny-weeny sentence in a great big store at the very end. Why? Because you knew we'd be mad. They said no on the shipping containers, and you guys used deception to go behind all of our backs and do it anyways. And go ahead and film me, that's fine. If you are going to force these shipping containers down our throat, they better be the most beautiful, gorgeous shipping containers I've ever seen in my life, and they better be maintained constantly, because I'll tell you what, you lied. This is deceptive, this is not honest, you went behind our backs because you knew we wouldn't like it, because you knew we wouldn't. Because people who are honest and are not being deceptive, you would have told me when I got up here in this council, said, tell me if I'm wrong. Did I misinterpret that? You would have told me yes or no, okay? Quit the deception. What else is going on behind our backs that we don't know about?
Mr. President, if you would please just allow me just 30 seconds. 30 seconds, thank you very much. So, I just wanted to clarify for everybody watching that when the shipping container conversation was happening during the ARPA conversation, it was actually me that requested that the shipping container piece of that be removed from consideration so that we could do something else with those dollars. And in the conversation about the turf field at Denison, this was discussed, that we would need some storage capacity, and we discussed the potential for one container, whether it's a shipping container or a storage shed or something, to service the turf field. This was done in full public view, in consultation with council. We're not talking about adding shipping containers to parks. I just wanted to clarify that. This was discussed in full public view.
Mr. President, I just want to make it clear that this conversation was completely on record. I can't have this community thinking that I lied to them when at the last meeting, I stood here flat-footed and said yes to those shipping containers. So, let's just make sure that we're making statements that are honest.
And if you went to the meeting...
But I cannot allow the community to think that I sat here and lied to them when I just stood here on camera at the last meeting and stated that, and stated it every meeting prior. There was never a time where I lied to this community about those shipping containers. That is wrong, and it's continued to fuel the fire and the flames of the politics that's happening in this community. That is not fair, and it's not right. That never happened, and we've got to stop repeating these things.
Hold on, no, we're not going to...
It is not right.
Lou Radewojcik?
I'm non-agenda, so I'm pretty boring, actually. But I see a common thread, actually, tonight, and the common thread is really of not communicating with the public when you're developing, and we're always told in a ninth inning. I'm here because it was watching the YouTube, the public hearing on zoning text amendments. The name alone sounds very boring. I mean, zoning text amendments, that's probably one you're going to skip. But the, what's happening, the legislation that's behind it, everybody here's got to watch it. Tell your friends to watch it. If there's one thing I can make clear while I'm up here, please watch the public hearing zoning text amendments that took place on 5/27/25, because underneath it is discussing about taking a residential home and converting it into a religious place. And just think about that. So, what I want you to do is actually watch this YouTube video on your front porch. I want you to sit outside and just visualize, visualize cars coming onto your street, visualize doors slamming and opening up and car alarms hitting, visualize people going into your driveway to turn around. That's what we're talking about. This is significant. This is significant legislation that because of all this noise that's been taking place over the last six months, we're missing some key, key legislation here, and we're not given its due time. And when I saw the process for zoning text amendments, the first one was on April 7th, 2nd April 7th, 3rd on May 14th, then they had the meeting on May 27th for the public hearing, and the last step is action by council, potentially June 16th, 2025. I mean, that's on warp speed, that is on warp speed, and we cannot digest that. And you know that I'm always paying attention to council events, and I missed it. And I think I do a good job of paying attention to everything that happens on the city. So, please, slow down and really think this one through, and watch the YouTube video.
Eileen Rammern?
Good evening, Eileen Rammern from Rutherford Road. After all the recent news stories about dysfunction at City Hall, many people have asked, why is this happening now? But it seems dysfunction was evident long ago. For example, on numerous occasions not long after taking office, the mayor held up council's approval of capital projects and contracts by leaving hundreds of emails unanswered. Council's job is to gather information so they can vote, and the mayor's unwillingness to answer emails kept them from doing their jobs. An internal study found that of the hundreds of unanswered emails, 91 were inquiries on pending legislation. Behavior like this does nothing to move the city's best interests forward. More recently, a collective gasp was heard throughout our city during last Friday's Council of the Whole meeting, when the mayor invoked a James Baldwin quote in response to the council president's text inquiring as to his well-being. After recovering from my shock, I did some research to try and understand the context of the statement. In short, what I found, and I quote, is, above all else, insert the phrase the mayor used, is a searing indictment of America's failure to rectify its shameful history of racial inequality. As a resident of a city where most of us are blind to color, creed, and gender, I find last Friday's statement to be an outrageous deflection, most definitely not in the spirit of the author's narrative. We needed healing. What we got was demonstration of tremendously poor judgment. Once again, behavior like this does nothing to move the city's best interests forward. This is not leadership. We talked at length for 20 minutes or so a couple of weeks ago, and the conversation was refreshing, and your insights were thoughtful. And when I asked about how citizens can benefit their community, you told me we should get involved and have open candid conversations. The conversations and involvement we're having right now are not the ones any of us want to have, but we've been left with no choice.
Alana Baldwin?
Alana Baldwin, Center Road. I was initially hoping to address this to the new Parks and Rec Director, I don't know if he's out there. First, welcome, we're so glad to have you, if you're still here. I'm not... ...the world and our piece of it were trying to return to normalcy after COVID. Icebergs all over the rink were reopening, and we were told that one of ours would not do a bunch of cuts. Two years later, in '22, as the skating and hockey season were about to start, our other rink was broken. They told it was going to shut down for repairs, and it was going to shut down longer so that they could paint the rink walls. The inconsistency and delays that happened drove hobby players, their families... The incessant delays that happened drove hobby players, their families, and their money to other programs. In the last several years, the ice pool and splash pads have been taking up time, money, space. Nothing happening. Maybe they're going to happen now. It's been years. Nothing's happened. It's been a story. Last summer, Cleveland Heights residents were informed that Cumberland needed massive repairs. We were told it might close. Public outcry, the city conveyed the message that Cumberland would be repaired and upgraded starting last fall. I don't know what happened. I don't know the weather. We're looking at possibly lipstick on a pig. I love this pig. I want it to open. It's this Wilbur, my Charlotte, Charlotte's got reverence. But we're not getting good repairs that we were taught was told were going to happen. Due to budget cuts, mismanagement, infighting, and the like, our programs and our facilities are suffering. We're hemorrhaging families and money out of our city. We've got to do better. And that starts a funny, big, general topic, listening to the community in all respects, not just the politicians. It involves supporting the programs and making repairs before they delay the use of our facilities. When key community resources aren't able to function, community morale clearly suffers. With far-reaching coscos says that last long after the pool, the rink, or the park reopened.
Cindy H. Larry Himmman.
Good evening. I'm Larry Himmman, living on Berkeley Road. And I have a big statement to the mayor. You say that our choice of getting rid of potholes was not our doing, that it has to be, I think you said that the state's doing, or maybe backwards, I have backwards, I'm not sure. But I have to say that you had it 100% wrong. You did not understand what is happening. When we drive up Berkeley and get to Maple, we have to drive totally to the other side of the road, including possibly onto the tree lawn, just to get around the deep potholes that are taking our tires away. This is bad. This is not what we pay for to have done for the city. I say, if you can't figure out what to do, then contact Beechwood, Salty Euclid, Shaker. And I think there are other cities that have the same problems. But they have taken care of it, and they've done beautiful jobs of it. Why can't we find out what they're doing and do the same thing that they're doing? Obviously, you're not doing that. Otherwise, you would have had that finished by now. We are not here to take our conestoga wagons over this bumpy road. I can't get my car to go over those potholes without damaging my axle. Do what you're supposed to do, mayor. You're the person that's supposed to find out what to do, and you're not doing it. Thank you.
Amy Jean.
Amy Jean, Scarborough Road. Khalil, the reason number one that you're unfit to lead the city. You attempted to pass a deficit-based budget with plans to spend almost $1 million from city savings without providing a complete budget package, failure at Finance 101. When six members of council voted against you, you labeled them Council Six, demonstrating your childishness and lack of leadership. Reason number two, you further pitted groups against each other when you publicly called for city employees and residents to stand up against Council Six. You created a sky-is-falling fallacy, demonstrating your lack of fiscal acumen. You stonewalled residents and used city staff as pawns. Reason three, we're still waiting for complete financial data from Kane Park. Reason four, in December, long before we knew the name Dan Horrigan, I received an anonymous Facebook message from a former employee who shared, quote, "The mayor's wife Natalie is what we dubbed as the head of HR. She directs who the mayor hires and fires," end quote. I have since come to know this person, as well as other current and former employees, who are all afraid to speak out about Natalie's volatility within City Hall. Reason five, you put a staff member on leave and allowed Natalie to continue her reign at City Hall. You sat on the complaint for months, just as you did with the complaint against Ian Hens. Reason six, Natalie's use of horrendous anti-Semitic language and comments that you chose to rationalize rather than condemn. Reason seven, you allowed Natalie to berate our police officers and did nothing to interrupt it. You didn't have the courage or leadership capacity to interrupt Natalie. You demonstrated an inability to lead and care for our city employees. Reason eight, you're unfit to lead the city. You approached the county to investigate, filing felony charges against one of those officers for doing his job. You are tearing this city apart, yet we, the people, will not let that happen. Khalil, resign or be recalled.
Hi, I'm Josie Moore. I live on Stillman. I think everyone here knows that I am a former council member, very briefly. When I ran for office, I was fueled by perhaps a starry-eyed belief in the power of community and the good of people. When I resigned from council, I told a friend that I no longer believe in people. I no longer believe in the good of people. So, and I've done a lot of healing since then. But I have to say that this past weekend was spiritually restorative. We put out the call to the people of Cleveland Heights that we are seeking to recall the mayor. And the people of Cleveland Heights responded in droves. Even the weather could not keep them away. In just three days, we have collected over 1,200 signatures. And we still have more people saying, how can I sign? And more people saying, how can I help? And it was so heartening. But one of the things that really just moved me was that the people coming in there, they weren't coming in there out of hate. They weren't coming in there out of vitriol. They were coming in there because they felt hopeless, they felt powerless, they felt frustrated and sad and indignant. And they just wanted something to do to make their city better again. They weren't coming out there, you know, out of rage. They were coming out there to sign out of love. Love for this city, love for its people, love for its communities, and love for our shared future. And it was so moving. And so many of the other signature circulators said, this has just changed me so much. I was in such a bad place. But hearing all these people talk about how much they love this city and how much they want it to be better, it was just inspiring. And so I encourage people to sign the petition.
I'm here to read the statement that many of you probably suspected we would have had from the mayor weeks ago. "To the residents of Cleveland Heights, members of City Council and city staff, serving as the first elected mayor of our city has been the greatest honor of my life. I came into this role sincerely committed to progress, equity, and service. But I must now acknowledge a painful truth. Through my ego, poor judgment, and missteps, I have lost the trust of the community I was elected to serve. I take full responsibility for the harm that has resulted from my actions, my words, and the consequences that have had on our city's unity and sense of shared purpose. Recent events, including my wife's comments and my response in a public setting, have caused understandable hurt, anger, and disappointment. Rather than de-escalating tensions, I allowed my defensiveness to cloud my judgment. And I failed to uphold the standard of leadership our residents deserve. For that, I am truly sorry. To the people of Cleveland Heights, I know I have let you down. I recognize that many have placed their hope and trust in me as the first person elected to this office. And I deeply regret not living up to that responsibility. I wanted to lead with integrity, vision, and accountability. But in the moments when it mattered most, I fell short. Though this chapter ends with disappointment, I remain proud of what we accomplished together, advancing inclusive policy, securing funding for community safety, and laying the groundwork for a more responsive city government. Hopefully, future leaders will build on that work with wisdom and compassion. Thank you to all who believed in me. I am sorry I failed to meet the moment. I wish nothing but peace, progress, and healing for the city I love. With deep regret and humility, I am submitting my resignation as mayor of the city of Cleveland Heights effective immediately. With sincere apologies, Khalil Sarin." And Mr. Mayor, I've done your homework for you, if you'd like. Sign it.
Guys, we have to maintain decorum, please.
Deborah Van, please.
Hard act to follow. Well, I am going to, before I start, before you start the timer, can we take one minute and sing "Happy Birthday" to Addie? Just, we need a little lift here. Okay. Happy birthday to you.